Okay, so anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the vice chair at this time. I'll call the meeting to order July 7th at 6:01 PM. And then I think we do a roll call. Jeannie Coleman?
Here.
Sheila Vaughn?
Here.
Jesse Keith?
Here.
Tricia Arietta, I'm here. And Megan's to join us. So the first thing on the agenda is to hear any visitors or is there anybody here that needs to be, would like to be heard? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to that next item, which is the KFE donation and possible vote. Is there somebody here from the Kingston Foundation for Education that would like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Allison Brown.
Hi Allison.
KFE. There's a couple of us KFE'ers on here. I know we've been normally presenting the check a little bit later, but there's a couple of things. I know the schools want to start finish paying for or start progress for, so we're just gonna give the check a little earlier so they have the funds available.
But we're happy to have you here. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I don't have like a speech or anything prepared. We had a great year. We kicked off the beginning of the year with the playground fundraiser, raised a bunch of money there. Tricia, thanks for organizing that. We had a couple of the great events and I'm gonna let Chrissy Armstrong and Erin Brett present the donation. This is their last year on KFE. Really sad they're leaving, but they have sixth graders, so they're moving on. And they've been, they've both been very instrumental in this whole program, so they will be missed dearly. I will miss them mostly, the most. So yeah, Chrissy and Erin, if you guys want to tell them what our donation is this year, that would be great.
Thanks Allison.
Thank you. I think just to echo what Allison said, it was an amazing year. You know, the kids did amazing at the fun run. And I have the check here and I can drop it off tomorrow. Is it just at the Main Street address? Does anyone else?
At your office Jill?
Central office to Sarah Hickey, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Sarah Hickey, okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and we have it here. We're gonna donate $70,000 behalf of KFE. And we'll drop that off tomorrow.
Well, that is amazing. And everybody obviously appreciates all of your guys' efforts throughout the whole entire year. I know this year in particular, you guys pulled out all the stops for a couple of other events. So just want to shout out to those things that the schools really couldn't do what we do without you guys. So we really appreciate all that you guys do. And Chrissy and Erin, you guys moving on. Years of dedicated service, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, and the school's a wonderful folk to work with. KIS and KES in our great, in great hands. And it's just nice when we work well together for the kids and hopefully they're benefiting from this, which it sounds like it is why we're here a little bit earlier to move forward with some of the projects. So thank you to all you guys and what you do as well.
Does anybody else on the board have anything that they'd like to say to the KFE or?
I just want to say thank you first. I'm gonna apologize, I'm so sorry that I'm late. Technical difficulties, my Chromebook did not want to let me sign in for anything. So I am sorry for that, but thank you so much KFE, that's amazing. I know you guys put in a lot of time and effort into all of your events, so I just want to also say thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thank you also for all of you, all of your posts that you make on the class pages and stuff. I know that those aren't run by the schools or anything, but it's very helpful when the word gets out to the community and it's not the same group of you doing the work. And hopefully you have some volunteers that can step forward and fill in for those huge roles that Erin and Chrissy have taken on. So we appreciate everything you've done for all of us. Thank you. Not all of us, really, the kids.
Thanks, Larry, I see your hand up.
Thanks Megan, I just want to say thank you guys. I know how much work has gone into it because we communicate all year long and you're amazing at the back and forth and we appreciate it so much. And I always say like Kingston is the best, they're the best community and our kids are lucky to be able to have this extra funding source. I had no idea the amount that you were gonna present actually, so that's incredible. So thank you guys.
Sheila. So I'll just chime in that I have high schoolers who are graduating and did not have the KFE when they had started. And now I have first grader who's getting the riches of it. And I know how hard it is in the years we didn't have it and how much we rely on it now for the technology and how much hard work goes into it. And you know, $70,000 is no easy feat when there are 75,000 other things that everybody is trying to get the money from as well. So thank you so much for all this hard work. And I know how hard it is and was super excited to be used again this year. So we appreciate it greatly.
Tricia.
I just want to say one other thing before, before this love session ends is that just working with you guys a little bit on the playground, just to see how your team operates and how you guys all pick up the ball and run with it are so organized and so much of a collaborative team was really humbling to see how you guys really do work well together. And everybody just has their area of expertise. Allison has her area of expertise and she just shines and it's just, it's amazing. So thank you.
Appreciate it. We love what we do. There's a lot of us, you know, that are behind the scenes. So yeah, I see a couple of people on the call. Caitlin and Sarah, so yeah, I'm glad there's a couple of us to hear, to hear the love. We'll let you guys continue on. Yeah, and then Chrissy will drop the check off tomorrow.
Thank you.
Before you do that, with that, I would really happily make a motion that we approve the $70,000 KFE donation for this year.
A second that?
Okay, all in favor? Oh, no, roll call because we're remote, just kidding. Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right, thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amazing.
Thanks guys, have a great summer.
Yeah, you too.
Have a good summer.
Bye.
Okay, next up we have the KES playground dedication. Carrie, I will turn that over to you.
Thank you. So we recently, as you guys know, because we had that quick meeting a couple of weeks ago now, John, who's a Kingston parent who passed away recently, he, him and his organization donated $10,400. And so we thought, and we know it's a town, obviously it's a, the land belongs to the town, but we wanted to talk to you guys about it first. Thought maybe an idea about is dedicating the playground towards in his name and putting up a plaque. So I don't know what you guys were thinking, what your thoughts are on that. We just thought that'd be a nice way to kind of celebrate his life for the family.
Dr. Per.
I would just note that if any votes taken tonight would be a vote towards supporting and that it would have to ultimately be approved by the town since this is a town-owned facility and property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeannie.
Thank you. I just want to apologize that I missed that meeting a couple of weeks ago. I am fully in support of everything that you all voted on that day to support his family. And if this is something that we vote on tonight, again, just that is contingent on the town's support. But I think it's a very nice idea and especially where he was so instrumental in getting that playground fixed. So that's appreciated. And that'd be a nice memory as well for his children, I believe.
I agree. Are there any other questions, comments, or would anybody like to make a motion that we support this to ask the selectmen if we can?
I can make the motion, yeah. I'll make a motion that we support the dedication of the playground in John's name with pending the selectmen's vote. And if we can, and when the selectmen are gonna vote on it, I'd be happy to attend.
Carrie.
I just want to, Sheila, it's, I didn't know, I could be hearing, I thought you said John, it's Sean?
No, I'm sorry, yeah. My Massachusetts accent was really killing.
And I'm from New York, so.
I don't say Rs and Ss and Ts and, you know.
Does anybody want to second Sheila's motion?
I will second.
Okay, we'll do, thank you. Roll call vote, Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Thank you Carrie for bringing that to us. And I think the selectman will be on board with that. All right, next up, school zone light sign discussion. And we have Jake from?
Yeah, hi everyone.
Hello.
So I'm here to present information related to, Carrie and I were looking to implement school zone signs and flashers to improve pedestrian and school safety. So Carrie kind of pitched this idea to be maybe three weeks ago. So I met with KPD and Keith Hickey and some other town officials to kind of assess the, the property. And we all ultimately came to the consensus that this is a good idea. It's definitely needed. There isn't actually even speed limit, a general speed limit sign posted. But much like the high school, middle school has, where the school zone sign flashes during school hours to prompt people to slow down. But there'd also be additional signs just indicating a school zone. So we did, Sean Turner, who's the acting Parks and Rec Superintendent for the town, was able to get a quote. And KPD actually has funds available. And the chief agreed that this is an appropriate use of the funds that they have based on the quote. So they would be able to fund it, which, which is beneficial for us. So really, I just wanted to kind of go over the logistics of this and the purpose of it and then kind of answer any questions as best I could.
That's great. Where would the sign go?
Yeah, so there'd be two, so it's gonna basically bookend the property. So it'd also help KIS as well. So the schools, the regular school zone signs that just say school zone, those are 500 feet out from the property. So I don't know if I can share my screen, but I have a map that can show it to you if you'd like to see that. But I'm not sure I have the ability to share my screen. Let me see, yep, I have it. All right, let's see. So. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the, do you see the school zone map?
Yes.
Okay, so the yellow triangle, it's small here. This is the, coming down the hill from Cancun. The yellow triangle would be the 500 feet mark where it would just say school zone. And then this red triangle would be the 250 mark coming up that little hill towards the front of KES. That would have the flashers. That would also say the 20 mile per hour school zone. The flashers would be set to the school time, the start and end times. So those would be activated during school hours. And then on the other end, past KIS, it would be the same thing. 500 feet out would be right where that bend is coming up towards the KIS driveway. And then the red would be closer at 250 would be the flashers.
Awesome. I think that's a great idea. I mean, we've heard from parents a number of times about concerns with safety with the traffic.
Yeah, yeah. And then just for pedestrian safety, for school safety, and then just for public safety outside of school hours because it is public spaces as well. I did also just want to show the quote here, just so you know, like, I don't speak numbers, but some people might. So the total, you know, it's basically two sets of everything for each end. The, the signs, the flashers, the postings, all the fittings and labor as well. So I think they, Detective Scavera was gonna be on the call, I'm not sure if he is or not. But I think they had like 50 grand in that quote, in that grant that they still had funds left in. So they, they were equally as happy to allocate the funds to this project as well because it obviously helps their, their line of work as well.
You know, that's awesome. Looks like Tricia and Jeannie have some questions, so we'll go in that order.
I just, the question I had is, as a matter of process, does this go before the town of Kingston, you know, the selectmen or?
Yeah, so.
Review for residential, you know, the flashers seem?
Yeah, so in talking to KPD and the town minister, it has to go through school committee and then to selectmen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does it have to have a, like a residential review? Like, I'm just thinking of the, you know, the flashers, is that intrusive in the neighborhoods? But maybe that's not even a question for the school committee. It's more like the town's gonna ask those questions.
Yeah, I imagine, I don't know the answer to that, but the flashers aren't like, it's not like a strobe or it's not even at night also. So you know, it's really pretty localized to like right where that car would be at that sign.
Yeah.
I don't see any projected like invasion on the residents, but that's, I'm sure that question will come up.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jeannie.
Thank you Tricia, I actually had some similar concerns. I know that the one down in front of the admin building, I don't know if it's maybe programmed incorrectly, but it goes off at all hours of the day. Sometimes you could be driving by there at night and it's still going off, like it's still flashing or it's saying too fast. So I just want to make sure that, that if this is supported by us, that the town is the one that's responsible for it, that people aren't going to be calling the school asking us to turn off a sign. Not us, but the school, that it is the responsibility of the town once they put it in. And also, I'm glad you mentioned the grant because I was gonna ask why we were talking about funding. I thought that would be something that would be specific to the highway department and would have nothing to do with our budget. But if it's being covered by a police department grant, then that would be something that, I guess, they would have to work with the highway department on funding and putting it in.
Yeah, correct. So I'm just kind of proposing the, the plan just because it is relative to the school. But yeah, all funding will be taken through the KPD. And then Sean Turner did say that you can automate it for school hours and then adjust it for daylight savings times. The one across the middle school, high school, yeah, I'm not sure what's up with that. But that is, there is residential areas right across the street and there's no real, like we have a lot of wooded area coverage, but there's nothing there on that main road. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments, or would anybody like to make a motion to support the signage to put forth to the selectmen?
I'll make a motion to support it. Just what signage for the, yes, whatever it's called, the flashers and the signage for?
Traffic safety.
From KPD.
Yeah. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll do roll call vote. Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you for doing all that work and getting the information. I think, I think that will be really helpful, I hope.
Sure, yes, thank you. So I'll, I'll keep you up to date on the, the next steps.
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have approval of minutes from June 9th and June 16th, 2025. Any comments on either of those, or would anybody like to make a motion? Tricia.
I just had a small, I just was reading through it and there's just this like transposition of Tricia Arietta on June 9th and H and safety, just reverse the E and I.
Oh, takeoff.
So minor, I hate to even say it, but it's like, I know. It's, it's a docu, it's a, it's a record, so.
Absolutely. All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes. Do you want to do them separately, Megan?
Can we do them separately just because I'm gonna abstain from the one, the second one? Sorry, thank you.
Sure, that's totally fine.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from June 9th as they're presented with the minor amendment on the safety of it, correction of my name.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes.
Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And then do we have a motion for the 20, no, 16th, sorry?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for June 16th.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, sorry. Tricia Arietta?
Yes.
Jeannie Coleman?
Yes, and this isn't the one I needed to abstain from, so I will vote for this one, yes.
Okay, Jesse Keith?
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Next up, regionalization study update. We met a few weeks ago and with the Collin Center from UMass Boston, got a lot of information about what, what they could do to find help with this information. So currently waiting on a proposal from them with exactly the scope of what they would be able to do and what the cost would be for that. So we can report back next time. Jeannie.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I know there was some public speculation after the first report in the South Shore News went out. It kind of didn't, didn't quite capture the whole, I guess, purpose of the committee and the purpose of the study. And just to clarify to the public, we're not moving forward with anything. This is going to be a study that will view all of the pros and the cons and all of the impacts of a potential full regionalization. It's going to include meetings with stakeholders, including the unions, the administration, students even, parents, other community members. It's going to be a full, we've, we are asking the Collin Center to give us a very thorough proposal. And based on that, whether or not we go with the Collin Center still would not mean that we're going to move forward with the proposal. It would just mean that we're now going to study the total effects of a full regionalization for the district. So just, just to answer some of those lingering questions, I received a couple of emails right after the article went out and we are not at that point yet. So this would be something that would need to be approved by all three school committees, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton, as well as, I believe, Silverlake. All three towns, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton, the select boards, and then go to a town meeting warrant for all three towns before it's even something that would be considered. So we're talking at least a year and a half out, if not two and a half years out for the process, if it's something that the committee determines to move forward with, to propose the downs. So there's, there's quite a process there. So Megan, I appreciate you putting that on the agenda as an update just, and I think going forward, we'll continue to update the committees, just so that everyone knows where, where that committee is at in the process.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for the clarification. I did hear some questions about, oh, you're gonna have this answer before budget season this year? We will not, unfortunately. Okay, next up, we have Sarah Hickey with some financials.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your folder, your, I'm sorry, I'm traditional. It's a digital folder. In your digital folder, there are two documents, the line-by-line budget, the financial report, and then the closeout document. There normally on a regular meeting, we would have that spreadsheet of all of the grants and donations and awards that have come in. So the award, the grant, I'm sorry, the donation that you accepted earlier will be on that sheet for our next meeting. The financial report, normally I go through that and make notes and talk about specific things on it. But at this point in time, really the only thing that matters on the financial report is the row of numbers along the bottom of the last page. And I have those on the closeout document. So if it's okay with you, I will go straight to the closeout document.
Sure.
Share my screen. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the, the Kingston operating budget for FY '25 was $14,568,739.78. And the operating budget is divided up into sections. So if you take a look where it says part A, there's regular education and special education. The regular education budget was $9,458,181.95. The special education budget was $4,860,157.83. So that's the, that top row is the breakdown of those two portions of the budget. Underneath that are the expenditures. So you'll see that the regular day and the special ed budget equals the budget total over here on the left. The expenditure regular day and the special ed expenditures equals this expenditure total. So overall, out of the operating budget for regular day and special ed, there was $38,533.13 remaining at the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30th. The next section of this document are the encumbrances. Encumbrances are for work that has been performed, that we haven't been invoiced yet, or for orders that have been placed or that we haven't received the orders yet. So the Department of Revenue allows us to carry over money into the next fiscal year. And so this list in two parts, again, regular day in the middle column, special education in the right-hand column. This is the list of outstanding purchase orders that we will be paying with FY '25 funds over the next two months. So the total amount for the encumbrances is $116,012.73. So if you take a look at this section here in the middle of the page, our pre-closing balance was $38,533.13. There's, there are encumbrances for $116,012.73, giving us a closeout balance for regular day and special ed of negative $77,479.60. Coming down to part two of this document, the vocational education budget, there was $250,400 budgeted for the vocational. That is the agricultural schools, tuitions and transportation. Out of those, out of those budgeted funds, $146,761.13 was spent, leaving a balance of $103,638.87. So the subtotal for part, part two is that $103,638.87. So if you take a look at the very bottom of the page, the grand total closeout, the parts 1A and 1B, the balance for regular ed and special ed minus the encumbrances gave us the negative $77,479.60. There was a surplus in vocational education of $103,638.87, leaving a grand total of $26,159.27. And again, it's recommended that the school department return this amount to the town of Kingston.
Thank you. Jeannie.
Sarah, is there a reason we have to return that amount? Or can we vote to move that into the stabilization fund and then at least have that $26,000 for next year?
I would have to check with the town about what the process is for putting money in the stabilization fund. I'm not sure of the language, whether that requires a town meeting vote or whether the select board can do that.
Nope. Nope. I believe when we voted to create it, it was a school committee vote, a board of selectmen vote, and then a town meeting vote to create the stabilization account. But I believe to move the money in, it just required a favorable school committee vote. So, or at least I would be happy to make a motion contingent on approval from the town or legal if we need to. But I just don't want to give back twenty-six thousand dollars knowing how tight our budget is for next year if there's a possibility that we can carry it forward.
Understood.
Thank you.
Completely agree with you, Jeanie. If we, we certainly have ways to spend it, I'm sure. It will be needed if we can continue to have that available. I think that's advantageous. Do you want to make a motion, Jeanie? Or does anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay.
I will make a motion that we move the twenty-six thousand, what was the, I'm sorry, I'm, what was the?
Twenty-six, one fifty-nine, twenty-seven.
Thank you. Twenty-six thousand, one fifty-nine, twenty-seven to the stabilization fund contingent on the town approval.
Second.
Or legal approval. Thank you.
Okay. We'll do roll call vote. Tricia Arietta.
Yes.
Jeanie Coleman.
Yes.
Jesse Keith.
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn.
Yes.
And I am a yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Other items unforeseen at the time of posting. Does anybody have anything that we were not already aware of that they need to bring up to the committee? I don't see any. Okay. Otherwise, if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn into executive session, not to return into open session?
I'll make the motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law to approve executive session meeting minutes, May fifth, twenty twenty-five, and June ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Tricia Arietta.
Yes.
Jeanie Coleman.
Yes.
Jesse Keith.
Yes.
Sheila Vaughn.
Yes.
And I am a yes.